June seventeenth. Um, the uh in place of uh rescheduled, I mean it would have been held Tuesday, we were unable to get a quorum because of people out town, out of town and that sort of thing. Uh so we want to um welcome our guests and as well as KJIW and the West Helena Bay world and any other um any other uh guests that we might have tonight. So we're gonna mark right into it. Uh Ms. Ramsey called her.
Uh Ford.
Here.
Etherly. Franklin.
Present.
Crockett. St. Columbia.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Have four present, two absent.
Uh so we're gonna move to our guests and they're on them. So we're gonna start with the event permit for the twenty twenty one King Biscuit Blues Festival. Uh to be presented by Mr. Jack Daniels. A copy of the permit is in your packet. Mr. Daniels, I'll say you earlier um on here. So you are, there you are, you're recognized.
Thank you all very much, and thank you for making time to recognize the King Biscuit Festival as we prepare for our twenty twenty one event. Um, as you know, it's been a little while since we've been able to produce the uh the King Biscuit Music Festival, and um we're looking to have a really big year, to be honest. Some of our leading ticket sales are starting to become um very exciting. So we are um seeking a permit to uh have closures pretty much match uh what has been done over the past few years, specifically uh with some of the accommodations that we've created for some of the um residents or businesses that exist within the festival grounds. Um, and and some of the specific individuals that we discussed, for some of y'all might have remembered from the twenty nineteen meeting, we've worked with agreements to ensure that um people, I have some accommodations. Never fails that the bell rings when you're on. But we um, we we've worked to provide accommodations and allow um appropriate egress and what is needed for um for those people to conduct the businesses, their business uh as best we can during the event, excuse me. That said, um uh most of the things, what we did in the permit process and the attachment to permit is kind of detail a little bit of things, including the setup activities, the days of closure, where the barricades will be, um and then some key festival information. In addition to that, um a- as many of you guys know, we've had, we've had some changes to ensure that we can maximize our handicap accessibility, and that has become a forefront of our desire to ensure that the festival is accessible to anyone and everyone who wants to come. And uh furthermore, um we are adding in our four hundred and five hundred blocks uh opportunity for nonprofits and other church-based organizations to have an area for presentation. Uh and there's the special permitting process for that, uh but that would give um folks who are interested in doing so a voice and opportunity to participate in the festival uh and 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 be a part of what uh what makes this uh this great event happen. Are there questions about the permit or the festival in general, or any information that I can address?
So we'll open it up to questions.
Yes, I have one.
Go ahead.
Uh, have you uh read uh uh Miss, Mrs. Boyd? Uh I noticed last year we uh things got a chance to get with her and to see uh about the issues that we have, will that, will they be resolved and not like was last year that some members of this body had to go down there and to say, hey, this is blocked off, that is blocked up. So I, I would be at this point, uh Mr. St. Columbia probably make a motion, but I would not entertain that until you all have sat down with her to have a conversation with her about, you know, her property, and it's another couple as well. I, I feel like that, you know, I understand you got, you all have everything done, but uh in good faith, last year we voted and we still had some issues. So I, me personally, I would like to see I talk with Miss Boyd, reach out to her and, you know, and it so, so she can be accommodated as well, because we always accommodate the Blues Festival. We want the people in Helena, uh Hel- Helena and West Helena to be, to make money and to do well as the Blues Festival as well, because when the, when the people are gone, we still have uh the people in Helena who, you know, want to make sure they can make their small business grow. So when they come back again, that they still can grow even further. So that, with that being said, I, 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 that's how I feel about that.
Yes, well, so you know, um to reply directly to that, we, we, we have reached out to Ms. Boyd, we have not heard back from her. Um, we have created a specific agreement uh both with the other couple uh that you had mentioned, which is the McNairy family. They have signed an agreement with the uh King Biscuit Blues Festival. Essentially, the agreement is, is if for any reason the King Biscuit uh Festival, any, any kind of activity that the festival blocks their egress, um we have uh created a system, basically a protocol, and that's listed, I believe, in the attachment with the McNairy. It's, it's very matched to the Boyd Agreement uh that details what should happen. So the first, first thing to, to not put too fine a point on it, but essentially it's a, there is an hour and a half for us to correct. Maybe it's a semi in the way, or a, 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 a vehicle, or something got misplaced, and an hour and a half for the festival to correct that. If the festival doesn't correct that, we um, in our agreement, we are on the hook for the entirety of their uh rental subscription, and that is listed in detail on what the cost is and the daily amount to be compensated for any reason that we are to block um both the Boyd location and the McNairy location. And for, for, for those also interested, we, we would entertain that discussion with any other member. Um, but our, our goal is to allow um citizens who have property in there to, to maintain their level of commerce. Um, but we, we have reached out, the communication, the document hasn't been signed, but it is not um, not from lack of effort.
Other questions from member, members of the council?
For curiosity, um it, it says here that uh property owners may not lease the sidewalk in front of their properties uh to outside vendors. How do you monitor that? How do you, how do you uh check that?
Well, um, you know, we, we have a few volunteers and a few staff people whose role it is to kind of focus around the vendor operations. Uh they, we have a list of who is permitted. Um, we also uh, they're also members of the Helena community, so they kind of know what businesses would be operating and what those businesses would have. And really, this is just to provide um, provide an opportunity for us to control what's happening uh within our event site. And not that we need immediate control of every and all operations going on in the event site, but uh we're trying to make it fair, and fairness is a big part of things. So if you want to come down and sell merchandise, um we are welcome to provide space for that, but what we're trying to avoid is, is individuals setting up something in front of their space that has nothing to do with their business. For example, if you sell shirts and shoes and you set up a, a, a business selling burritos, um, or you, or someone contracts your space from outside, that uh, that, that comes about, that removes the uh intention to good faith of, of what we want to do and, and allowing uh people to participate, uh and it also undercuts what we're trying to do as a festival as far as keeping things within the community and revenue circling back through Helena, West Helena.
Okay, I, and so then it must be associated with the business, because I've seen businesses before selling um popcorn, whatever, in front of their business. They own the space there, but they're selling items that are not associated with uh, and from what you're saying, that it needs to be associated with the business. If I sell shoes, then I need to be selling flip flops or something like that, something associated with shoes in front of my business.
Yeah, or, or we can.
Even with my occupational license.
Excuse me, yes, I'm sorry, what was that?
I said even with an occupational license that I've already paid to the city.
Uh, yeah, uh a- and, and really, all it takes is additional permitting process through, through us, and it's really to, to allow uh the fairness aspect, because we are, we are having to control both the safety and security and the egress that goes on within those city streets. Uh, that, that, that does become a challenge for us in trying to maintain that control and, and what happens. It also provides us with, with a, a level playing field. Um, so I mean, I think, I think popcorn is one thing, but, but bringing in outside vendors, really, it has to do with outside vendors and communication. We are more than happy to have any kind of communication with any business going on, because we know there's a lot of activity. We're talking between twenty to thirty thousand people coming to downtown Helena to spend money uh to have a good time, and we want them to do so, but we also have to maintain security. We have to maintain a little bit of control of the streets, and we also have to allow a level playing field for everyone doing business down there during the festival.
Thank you for your response.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
I have a, I have one.
I'm sorry, say again.
I have a question for him.
Okay.
My question is this, I don't, do you think this, if a business want to sell shirts or whatever they want to sell, how is the festival can control what a person sells if they already paid a permit into the city for wha- for whatever they're gonna do? So I, I, do you think that's fair that, that these people have to live here, and they decide to sell balloons, candy, or whatever they can, you, you, you have, you're in front of their business, and they can't sell what they want to sell? How is this good faith? If I decide, okay, we'll have twenty thousand people here, and I can sell sugar cookies or doughnuts, and I got a, a distillery or whatever I may have, I can't sell with just what, I can't sell whatever I want to sell to make some extra money?
We're not saying you can't sell. What, what we're, what we're saying is we're, we're trying to limit outside activity. So, but, but by the leasing, we mean that you can't bring somebody in to sell those items. Uh, we also have to control that through health department. If it's food sales, um, we have to be sure that a- anyone who, who is receiving food within our festival grounds is doing so in a safe manner. Um, everyone who is signed up through our permitting process goes through the health department. They also are paying taxes, so that's revenue to the city. Um, but we, it's the same reason you can't just drive down the middle of the street. There's the safety, there's an egress issue um at for this particular time. Uh, and, and we're not saying you can't, we're just saying that we need to communicate and have a permit within the festival so that there's an understanding of what's going on from an activity standpoint.
Okay, so can, can we, can we agree that you would all, you wish the same good faith you asking them to show that you always show the same good faith to the, the vendors? As you asking them to do one thing, can you make sure that you all are, are following the same protocol that you want the vendors to follow?
I think without question. I think one of the reasons that, that this festival will continue to work well within this community is a dialogue. And to have um, to have a flexibility within our rules, again, allowing church and other organizations to come in, uh allowing egress for businesses, especially people who have lots that want parking. Um, I know that that has been an issue in the past, and that's one of the reasons that I'm, I'm, I'm with the festivals, to accommodate these things. Um, but, but secondarily, we're not trying to stop people from having business and conducting commerce. We just want to make sure that it's a level playing field. If we're gonna have folks come in from all over and vendors come in from all over, they don't want to have to be undercut by um by, by any kind of activity. So we, we want to make sure that, that everyone's doing the same thing, following the same rules, a- and I think that creates an opportunity for um but, but very directly, we want to communicate and we want to make sure that if someone comes to us and says, hey, we want to do this at our site, we, we are not so rigid a- as, as to not work with a, work without that individual, that group, that business. We very much want uh the, the people, especially the folks on Cherry Street and, and on Walnut Street, to feel good about the festival. And, and at the end of the day, everybody walks away from, from, from the weekend, weekend, really week-long October event with some money in their pocket and some revenue to the city through taxes and fees.
In my last. In my last one for you, in twenty nineteen, how much revenue, h- how much revenue did you all make, and how much did the city get from that?
You know, that is not a number I have off the top of my head. I'm more than happy to provide that. Um, it's not, that's not something we, every year is different, especially after a COVID year. Um, but we, we, we really are, are, are providing the revenue stream through the fees and, and the, the site location fees, and the closer, the closer you get to the zero block of Cherry Street, the, the fees increase. Um, and it also depends on the width and size of your booth, but um, you know, the majority of revenue really is through, for the city specifically, is, is through tax collection. And uh, and, and that's, that's on, on how the revenue streams is taken care of through sales tax, and we would expect, and it is a part of our um vendor application, whether it's for food, including the two percent hamburger tax, or for vendors, in, in ensuring that they know that it is on them to, to ensure compliance. Now, I, a- as someone who does festivals around, I would very much recommend that the city is having someone from the revenue department uh communicating with these vendors and ensuring that there is compliance, because I, I, I do know that you know, King Biscuit goes through audits to ensure that there's tax compliance, both cities, county, state, federal. Uh, but we, we want to make sure that um, that, and I think it's, it is very standard practice for cities to and states to have revenue officials out there working with the vendors, ensuring there's compliance.
And do you all ha- I know you said with security, so who would you, would you all be using our local police as security? I see the, the downtown cherry has the sky cam. Would you also be using the city's sky cams as well to help control um uh police presence and protection for, for the people from out of town? So that, that's another issue. Um, that this, you, you, you all are welcome to rent, if you get the mayor to get you a contract or something together, if you want to use these sky cams we have, as well as the one you all have down on the pole, to make sure that we could at least still have police presence in the community as well, so as down there at the festival. Have you all spoken with the mayor about how you all can work on donating some money? Uh, if y'all gonna use one of the portable, portable sky cams, we should have three by the time the festival is here. But have you all decided to rent one, or at least pay half, a- and in case the city decides to want to get another one, it'll be something good that the King Biscuit would all the years they've been here, I, I don't see anything that says the King Biscuit donated this to the city of Helena. Uh, I wish that the, the King Biscuit would start doing something. I know that you said we get some revenue, but I, it would be nice to have something that the King Biscuit has given to the city to say, hey, we appreciate the city for allowing us to have the King Biscuit Festival, uh whether, whether it's a sky cam, whether it's something to say, hey, that we're, we're, we're wanting to see our city do better each year with police protection or whatever, even funding a cop. You know, I know that, I know that we had post-COVID, but even we could try to see how can the festival help the city? The city is helping the festival a whole lot, but how can the fe- festival help the city after the festival is over with? That's some of my concerns. I would like to see something, you know, you, when you all go, you know, it's over with, but I think we, a bench or something to show the city, hey, we appreciate you, or something, and that's just something that I think that people should start doing when, when they, when they come to the city with a festival or something. Give, show the city, hey, we appreciate you, because with the sky cams, the city is paying for those, but the portable, it's not the ones you all have down there already, but if y'all gonna use those, we gotta pay for security or whatever. I think that the festival should at least try to find a way to, to donate something back to the city.
Yes, sir, a- and, and you know, in many ways, I agree. I, I will say, what the festival does for the city is it brings twenty thousand to thirty thousand people to downtown Helena for almost a week, and, and I think that in itself, for many small municipalities, um i- i- is quite a gift. Um, that said, uh, from a security and standpoint, uh, security standpoint, we hire both the city uh police officers and we hire the, the county deputies. The city police usually work on a contracted basis under the security guise of, of both myself and our security director uh to, to work as security officers. Now, they are not the only security officers. We have almost three dozen security officers that are privately contracted, private security that help us with the access points. So that allows our police, who are contracted, again, through uh, through an agreement and paid for by the King Biscuit Festival to work the streets and be more hands-on versus just being stuck in one spot, one position, not being able to go. And then, and we meet very frequently with the chief uh who has signed off on this permit. Uh, we, we agree uh that there are um, there's a lot of opportunities to uh, wi- with a lot of other festivals, how, how security things have gone on, you just, the, the barricades and the, the security aspect is, 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 is almost the majority of my concern. We have an emergency action plan that is close to forty pages that kind of highlights, a- and, and we're more than welcome to share that. That's not something we like to share publicly, because it talks about what our security is, and therefore could be created as, oh, it could be found, you could find weaknesses in it. But within our security professionals, we use a security action plan that, that highlights both the use of private security, as I mentioned, city, the um, the sheriff department works for our overnight security, and then we also work with the state police. Um, but from a security standpoint, uh, we do contract. Um, I, I hadn't been approached by the chief to pay for the use of the cameras. Um, I, I certainly understand that that is something that, that, that has a great feature that you guys now have. Uh, I, I, I will bring that up with the chief and, and happy to supplement that, but as far as um from, from an overall standpoint, we, we really believe that, that we are driving the tourism for the fall, that the tourism dollar is coming in for the fall for the King Biscuit Festival, and, and that, from, from a gift standpoint, um, that is, that is what we try very hard to provide, a safe, secure environment that people can come down and enjoy themselves and not worry about cars rushing by, to know that there is a, a visible and an invisible cordon of security that allows fun to happen for all people of Helena and the guests of Helena as well.
And lastly, um, I know you said something about uh the, the, the fest was in um October. Uh, how, how would you all, uh with the, with the number of people that you say are coming? How, because see, when the, when fest was over, wh- that could put us in a, in a spike in cases with coronavirus. There's a variance out now. What are you all, how would you all say, what, what um actually you ought to put in place to help keep the numbers of, of the COVID rising? So when the fest was over with, what if we have a spike in cases? What are you all going to do with the social distancing? How you all are gonna work with that? When uh we have a variance out now, and the numbers in this community are on the rise, and when the fest was over with, we got people coming from different places. So we would have to, we would have to try to make sure our people are vaccinated and all these other things. What if the festival got in place to make sure that somebody come in with a fever? What if somebody is asymptomatic? They don't know they have it and spread this around into our community? The gift that you all be giving us is more COVID cases. So we need to, we need to look at that, because um, we, we had, we, we had our share of cases and uh they're on the rise in Phillips County. But what does the King Biscuit have in place for that? Ti- are, are you gonna check temperatures? Are you gonna make sure people have a, something on saying that they've been, they've been vaccinated? Would they have a, a, a wristband on, say, I've, 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 I've had my COVID, both, both uh one and two, or if they had the jizz, the jizz, I had my one dose. What, I don't want this community, when the fest was over, any fest was over with, and we have a high number of cases, and we have a, a lot of elderly people live here. I just want to know what is the plan for that? And then I, I'm done. That's the only question I have, and I hope uh that you can answer that, because when, when the fest was over with, a couple of days after, maybe a week after, then we'll start seeing, what if we start seeing new cases? So people coming in from different parts of the world to here, right? You all have people Australia, uh Africa, all over the world coming to this festival, right?
That's right.
So my question is this, do you, do you all kind of think it's a little too early since the vareness, the vareness is out right now? And we don't know what people gonna bring into Helena, West Helena, that we can have a huge outbreak? That's one of the concerns that I have. I'm not trying to put a, a damper on your parade. I just want to make sure that the citizens put me here for a reason. I want to make sure I answer all the questions, and I don't want to leave nothing o- 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 on the table. I want to make sure everything is, I'll be off there with everything on the table, that we should be concerned about this variance in the, in this community.
So um, having just done a large event up here in Memphis, I know how tricky it can be to uh establish a COVID uh protocol, and one of the reasons we don't and haven't listed in this permit the specifics of our COVID protocol is because COVID from an event standpoint has become a moving target, and I want to be clear on what that means is, is the CDC and then the, the officials in, in both state and county health departments uh have, have changed rules. As we kind of know, there's a different protocol that comes out uh every, every few weeks, and with the rise or the potential rise in COVID um spreading or, or a new variant, so to speak, we, we will follow, first of all, at the most minimum, the CDC and the state guidelines. So the state and the CDC say we gotta mask up, we are gonna put people in place to ensure everybody's masking up. And if those are, if that is the law of the land, we will follow the, the law of the land, but uh we will, we will maintain what that, that protocol is at the minimum. Now, the, 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 the other side of things, um, from a planning standpoint, regardless of what CDC says, or, 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 or the governor says, we will have extra hand washing stations. We will redesign our, how we lay out our porta potties so that there is social distancing in the lines to the porta potties. Um, there will be hand washing stations available. We also will, will, will press on our food vendors to ensure that they are following safe protocols and ensuring that, that if there's still a need for social distancing, which I very much believe there will be, in, in what, four months' time. Um, yeah, I, I think that, that, that this is the forefront. Security and safety isn't just, you know, people with badges. I- 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 now, in, in the COVID age, i- from an event standpoint, the last thing we want to do i- is create an environment for COVID to run rampant, and, and I, I very much appreciate your concern, and you should know that a- as one of the safety and security officials for King Biscuit, it is the top of our mind and my mind. Uh, so we, we, we will go above and beyond just what, 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 what is asked of us to, to provide environment of safety. Now, there is other side to that, that, that we cannot control the behavior of our patrons. We can put up rules, we can and we can have enforcement opportunities and, and people in an enforcement position, but um if people don't want to follow the rules, all we can do is ask them to leave. Um, and we don't always, because it's an open and most of the festival is free to anybody in the public, it creates a very tricky situation. And to be honest with you, the way that I see that is that it's signage, it's communication, uh, all of which you'll see, it's a communication advance to our ticket holders as we get very close to the event and understand exactly what during that time bracket, so you know what the law of the land is. I guess the, the recommendations of CDC during that late September, early October time, um, that, and, and that's, again, because it's a moving target, it's very difficult for us to simply just say, this is what we're going to do, because we might need to do five more things than currently we're doing. I mean, we all kind of remember what it was like last year, um, leading into the fall, where everyone thought, hey, it's kind of over, and then we had the reoccurrence. So we don't want to nail ourselves down just yet, but I do want to be absolutely sure with everyone that not only will we be following the guidelines of the, of the land, but we'll, we will be above and beyond to make sure that we uh are not in any kind of spreader or any kind of putting our, our patrons in jeopardy, both at, at the site or days beyond.
King Biscuit Daniels, um, I'm gonna go ahead and call.
Um, I'm gonna go ahead and call a question and see if there's a motion to approve the, the, uh, permit this time for the Blues Festival in twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Columbia. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Jack Daniels for making his presentation tonight. I think he's done an outstanding job and I just happen to know for fact, uh, what he's talking about, that, uh, King Biscuit has been here a long time. It has protected our community and has made millions, millions of, brought in millions of dollars, uh, to the local, uh, people and, uh, has provided jobs and security for everybody that participates in it. And I commend you, Mr. Daniels, on the job you and King Biscuit have done to present your program. I'd like to make the motion that we accept the, uh, proposal that he has presented tonight to the thirty-fifth King Biscuit Blues Festival to be held October sixth through the ninth in the year of twenty twenty-one. Uh, make that motion that we accept, uh, this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. St. Columbia. Mr. St. Columbia, may it be that we adopt the event permit, uh, for the King Biscuit Blues Festival in twenty twenty-one. Is there a second? Do you have a second for Mr. St. Columbia? Okay. So, uh, unless somebody's on mute, I'll let it. All right, it sounds like we, we don't have a second. Uh, the motion does for like a second, Mr. Daniels. I wanna thank you for your time. Thank you for, um, uh, thank you for all you do, for all the festival does, uh, for our community and we, uh, we will try to get, uh, some answers to some of the questions, I guess, and come back and try and get. So, thank you very much, Mr. Daniels. Have a good evening.
Thank you all very much for your time. Very much appreciate it.
Thank, thank you. Um, okay, so we're moving down. We, we have a lot of items on our agenda tonight. Um, so we're gonna move on to, I, I, one, here, because I don't, I have a lot of phone numbers and not necessarily names, but it's kind of hard for me to tell, um, everyone who is on the Zoom call, but, uh, Williams was scheduled to, who owns the Delta Dirt Distillery and he might be working right now because I think they're open on Thursdays. Um, but he was originally gonna address the council about his, our, and impulsive, react by the historic district commission. Um, I wanna make sure, Mr. Williams, are you on? I don't think he is, but I just don't wanna, just in case, Mr. Williams, are you on? Okay, if, uh, if you are and you just speeded or something, then interrupt me later. But, um, he, he did show up, uh, I think twice, uh, to, uh, to present. And like I said, I know, I believe they're open, uh, tonight, so, um, and I'm sure it's gonna be a busy weekend for him, so he might not be able to, uh, to make it. But I will, uh, kind of merge this into the next item, uh, unless Mr. Williams interrupts me. Yeah, he was gonna address the council, uh, about his desire, along with several others, to reactivate the historic district commission, which is something that, uh, several people approached me, Williams. Um, and of course, Delta Dirt Distillery is, if you don't already know and you're listening, is one of our, um, most exciting and new, um, businesses on Cherry Streets, received literally international attention, um, as well as national public attention. And I would say has probably exceeded expectations. Um, I think that would importantly, I think they would say that. Um, so it's been a real exciting development. But no man is an island and he, he would like to see, I would like to see the historic district commission, uh, reinvigorated. What does that mean? Uh, it, it means that the will make, in the historic district of Helena, uh, are able to, are eligible for tax credits for those investments. Um, in order for that to continue, of course, we, we had a year, uh, of COVID where almost nobody met, um, including the, uh, Helen District, Historic District Commission. But it already been somewhat inactive, um, or I guess had lost momentum. So in order to maintain that tax credit designation, you have to have an active historic, uh, district, uh, commission. The way that works, it's established, uh, the, the tax credits are state, but the commission is city. Pointed by them, confirmed by the city, by the council, city council. Um, so what I did was go down the list of existing commissioners and I spoke with each one of them, um, and some of them had tech, technically rolled off as far as their appointments go. Uh, but the law says until someone has been replaced, they continue to serve. So technically they were still serving it because they hadn't been replaced. But, uh, I spoke to every member of the commission, asked them about their willingness to serve, uh, told them about the, uh, re- renewed interest in, um, in the commission and, and asked them their opinions on it. The result of that is the letter, um, our member in them, I'm sorry, it looks like this, and these are the individuals, uh, Sandra Lee's gonna, is gonna stay, she wants to stay on the commission and she's excited about it being re-invigorated as well. The other commissioners all, uh, told me that they would voluntarily, uh, step aside for these new commissioners. Uh, they were in turn excited to see that it was being reinvigorated. Um, the only condition, um, Smith, uh, asked me was to make sure they all receive training and, uh, and what that means to, to have a district commission. And so I agree with that and I think that's a good idea. And all of them, uh, on this, uh, having said that, it's in your packet and I would ask for any questions and ultimately, uh, ask for the city council to confirm those appointments. So right now, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Comment, question? I don't know. But I, I did not know that you were seeking, uh, replacement. And I have some names that I'd like for you to approach, uh, I think would be good, uh, candidates, even though, you know, uh, I didn't know that we, uh, uh, were nominating and I just got the thing that we were voting on. But Naomi Colomms would be a, a great person, Tarrant County Rural He- Health Network Director. Faye Duncan Daniel, who's a retired executive hotel management from Los Angeles, Nevada, who relocated back here and she's a community advocate. Um, Judge Kathleen Bale, retired circuit judge. Uh, Cynthia Edwards, former director of the Delta Cultural Center and Betty and Walter Darnell, who are retired educator, one is retired educator and the other, uh, administrative behavioral health specialist. Those, some people I would like for you to, uh, um, you know, to talk with or whatever to, uh, you know, to approach them regarding this historic district. Most of them have lived here all of their lives.
Right. And I think all good names. I have spoken with Ms. Colomms about it. Um, but the second person on your list, I, I didn't speak to this. Um, and I know the rest pretty well. Um, and I agree, they're all outstanding individuals and, and would be, uh, Autumn is pretty busy. She's chairing the, um, equity task, and extremely productive and successful. And, and she's, she's got her hands full, but, um, but yeah, they're all outstanding individuals. The difference is that, uh, these individuals, um, are people who, who reached out to, to us and the, probably the most important thing about them is they've all made investments in, in, in the historic district already. Um, and I think, you know, in the case of Mr. Williams, for example, you know, he's a young man, his family has already done, uh, a lot and, uh, we wanna encourage that and we've lost a lot of momentum in this issue. I think all the people you mentioned, I know them all and they're all stellar individuals and I would love to see them on city commissions, absolutely. Um, but these are the individuals who have a specific investment in the historic district and a, and a specific interest and, uh, not that they wouldn't.
So the requirement is?
They would all, I think they would all be excellent on any number of city commissions, actually. So I think they're, they're, they're excellent suggestions.
What the investment?
But these are the individuals who, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Would the investment be someone who lives in a district or you have to have a business in the district? Or not?
Only have to live in the city. You only have to live in the city limits as far as, uh, what I read.
Yeah, most of these people live on the Beach Street Historic District.
Um, I'm not sure how many of the people we, we are discussing actually live there, but they, I, I'm not sure, I'll have to look again. I'm not sure any of them, well, maybe one, now that I think about it, one probably does or maybe two. But a bigger issue is that they've actually invested, uh, money in the district and they're actively, they have a self-interest in saying that the historic district thrive. And we've had a, we've had people, we've had good people on the historic district commission. Um, we are, the people they replace are all good people. Um, but it needs a new sense of energy on that subject. And these folks, um, and we also have lost a lot of momentum and time on the, on it anyway, even if you consider the, um, COVID situation. And with the Easter storm and what's happened to Cherry Street in particular, the time is, uh, the s- here. Uh, it's not something that, um, you know, it's, it's not, it's not an emergency, but it's pretty close because we're, we're not too far away from losing that historic district designation. And if we lose it, we lose the tax credits to go with it. And so we lose the incentive to invest in it. And, um, so I would urge you to, we have individuals who, who have invested, have expressed an interest, um, do wanna reinvigorate this commission. I would say we're very fortunate that we have these individuals who have come forward and they don't have a particular agenda, um, except to see the historic district thrive. So, and I would, I would ask you to confirm the appointments. Uh, they're, they're all good.
Individuals live? All, all of these individuals live in the historic district and they own homes here.
Yes, ma'am.
For the body, uh, Ms. Ford, I agree with you. Uh, I think that there are, uh, people who in this community who, who want to see, uh, the historic district, uh, brought back. Uh, I would like to also add to your list, Marvy, ask you who owns a business downtown Helena, if we're gonna, this is to the body, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this, I am, you know, I'm in favor of opening the door for anybody who wants to come in, but I don't think that, that people who are, if, 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 if people who wanna be on the district, open it up to everybody so everybody can have the same equal opportunity. Like Ms. Ford said, uh, Betty Darnell, Be- Betty and Walter Darnell, we have good people who, who know the district better than some of these people who are being, who are asked to serve. I would like to see more people added to the list so that we could have a, uh, to give everybody the same opportunity. Because if you limit, uh, down, the people who own downtown Bar and Grill have been here just as well, so is Mr. Stoner, just opened up a law practice downtown, well so are the people who own the distillery. These people have, uh, renovated, uh, two buildings, to turn one into a house alone, to turn one into a restaurant. I think everybody that has tried to, with a small business downtown to keep their doors open, should be on the list. Some of these people that were on the list, that when you went to talk to them about being on the list, they didn't know who you were and you didn't know who they were. So I, I'm with Ms. Ford on that. Uh, mayor, I mean, the body, if, if, if the head of this, uh, if the mayor wants to present his list, we can vote it up or down. I'm fine with that, but I would like to see more names added. I would like to see more people reached out, even if the council has to re- reach out to some people as well. But if, if, if the head of this, which is the mayor, if he wants to get his list voted up or down, I will, I will certainly help him do that. And I'm most likely down, but that's what he wants to do.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, Joe St. Columbia.
Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, of course, I, I, I noticed the names on the list and all these people are, uh, highly, highly rec- reputable people, uh, and own businesses downtown. Uh, I, I, I noticed one name is not on the list. I was surprised not to see it. And that's Mr. Chuck Davis, who lives, uh, downtown in the upper building that he owns. He has spent over a million dollars of his personal money in downtown Helena. He purchased the, uh, Daily World and has done a remarkable job as the owner of the Daily World, keeping, uh, us in a newspaper. It's people like him and these people that you list here, uh, Mr. Thomas Williams, who has invested into Delta Dirt Distillery, I'm sure a million dollars at least in that facility down there. Uh, these are the people that have such a great amount of money in the downtown area. They need to be on there. And these other people, like, uh, Ms. Everdeen said, and, uh, uh, I, I think, uh, these other people certainly should be considered and we might more open that commission, uh, with more names, more people. Uh, I think the more you have, uh, more opportunities you have and more interest you have in developing it. But I think they should have a stake or dog in the fight, uh, so to speak, uh, and have some money in this thing too. If, uh, you're gonna be downtown, you certainly wanna see your business grow along with everybody else. Someone coming from outside with an interest in downtown, that's great. But, uh, I think that, uh, they would need to, uh, put some money, put some money into it as well, such as Mr. Davis and Mr. Williams. Uh, Matt Inman has remodeled a building down there, it lives down there. Uh, these names are great and I think many more would even make it even greater. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And the historic district shouldn't just, uh, uh, and cap, uh, you know, encompass the, uh, downtown area alone. There are more areas that, uh, comprise the historic district. And, uh, you should add more diversity, uh, and not just you, uh, uh, have to be a business owner. Yes, you should have some type of stake, uh, in there, but you can live in, uh, here and be invested in your community and wanna serve your community. That's what I'm, 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 I'm adding also.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Well, I would, I would ask you to, um, to either vote it up or, and the reason is just really simple. I've been here two and a half years. Um, and these folks have reached out because they want to add their energy and value to this. They all have invested, um, maybe all but one, but the other person has certainly been part of a lot of investments in downtown Helena. That, this is not something that's strictly, uh, a, a, a city issue, tax credits are state tax credits and it's guided by state law. I'm certainly open to add more people to it. Um, but you have to understand, we had people before and they could, they rarely got a court. So it's not about just who, who, I mean, good names, there are a lot of good people that, all of whom, uh, mentioned it to me, not one. These people all did. And they have an energy and a vitality to make it work. And this is a state, state tax credit. You just can't add anything you want, uh, to this district. Um, it's, it's all governed by state law. Our job is to have an active energetic, um, commission. My job is to appoint those people to the commission. Your job is to decide whether or not to confirm those appointments. Tonight I'm asking you, uh, we, to confirm these appointments so they can get about the business of downtown. If, uh, if I find out we can, or any of us find out that we can add people to the commission, I'm more than open to that. I'm more than open to that. All the people that were named are all people that I would love to see. And some of them already are actually involved in civic affairs. Need that kind of energy. That's what we need. We have not had an active Main Street. We've not had an active chamber. We've not until recently had an AMP Director. We've lost momentum and we have a lot to make up for. So while I want to make everybody happy, I'm a politician. At the end of the day, what it's about is getting the work done. And these people want to do the work and they don't get paid for it. They don't get paid. They don't, we have a commission that gets paid every month and they haven't met in months. These folks don't get paid. They made a financial investment in a stake here. And in Cherry Street, in downtown Helena, in Historic District, they make work. We're very, we're very close to losing that Historic District status. So I would definitely recommend that we act quickly. And that's what I would say.
I move the table, this issue to the second meeting in July.
Mr. Franklin moves that we table this. It's a preferred motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Let's say the second's the motion. Uh, any discussion about the motion?
Uh, Mayor, can you, can you, is it possible for you to, in between that time, find out if it's possible to add other people to this commission? And also add some of these people that have been suggested?
Sure, I can do that. But remember, I've also got to, you know, find out and make sure they want to be on it, that they have an interest in serving on it and do this work. I know they're all capable of doing it and I know they're all good citizens and stellar. I mean, everybody, I think I know everybody's. Couldn't agree more. But the fact is, we've had an inactive commission even before pandemic. And we need an active commission and we're gonna lose it. And when we lose it, we're gonna lose the tax credits. So it's, it's important business. Our, I would argue that Cherry Street is along with the river. Certainly, the two iconic things about our community that tell people who we are. And we've taken some pretty big hits with that Easter storm. Not to mention just the lack of energy and movement and all the rest. From all the reasons I just said, we, we. But at any rate, so we're very fortunate. We have people who want to do this. Very fortunate. And I don't think we should discourage it, but I, I have no problem asking, trying to find out if we can add to the commission. Or asking any of these individuals if they're interested in serving on it. Answer your question.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't see why we can't approve these people that you have and look into the future of possibly adding others. But I don't think we need to drag this along many other things that we drag around. I think we need to go ahead and do this because there could be a lot of money lost to this community. If we do not maintain a Historic District in the downtown area of Helena, Arkansas. A lot of money is going to be lost to our population, to our people, and it'll affect tourism. And I don't think kicking this can around is gonna help. I think we need to support the ones you've put on and ask that you look into the possibility of adding up. I would be opposed to putting this off until two weeks from now, but we need to move forward with this community. And just dragging things around from meeting to meeting is not my protocol. And that's what I have to say. And I'll vote against dragging it around.
Mr. St. Columbia? I'm so glad that you said.
I'll address that, Mr. Franklin.
Well, I'm gonna address you anyway. I'm so glad that you said that because when it's an important issue that come before this body, you either get off the line. Just like you did when a couple of people wanted, we voted for some raises, you voted no for one and yes for the other. If it came to the city getting anything done that's not in favor of people that you like, is what it is. And that.
Look, I'm not gonna sit here and listen to you all night, Mr. Franklin. Run me down, try to criticize me. Now, you can.
Let me, let me, let me intervene here.
You address the council or you address the mayor. Don't address me. Are you gonna have a fight on your hands with me? And I don't think you want that, Mr. Franklin.
I don't think.
Let me, Ms. Franklin, if you'll suspend momentarily. So to, to address actually what was said. There's, if, if we can expand this commission, then I'll support that. And I'll open up, open up to other, I'm, I'm speaking, Mr. Franklin. I'll open up more positions that y'all think would be advisable. To, and also reach out to the people mentioned, all of them. And any, anybody that you want to meet here and ask them about their interest in serving on it. In the next meeting. I have no problem with that. But I do think we should go ahead and confirm those who have shown an interest. But you have my commitment. If we can't expand it, I'll support expanding it. And I'll also reach out to those people that you've mentioned to see if they have an interest in serving on it. And also encourage them to reach out to you, let, you know. Between now and then, and, and the next meeting that we have, who is interested in, and also. Point now and then, to the extent that we can legally expand it, I'll support. You have my word on that. But I do think we need to get this ball rolling.
I, I, I would like to say that there's a motion on the floor and I think that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Franklin, I know that and you're not, and you're out of order. We're in discussion and questions. And so I was responding to what Mr. St. Columbia said about moving forward and changing it later. And I basically just said I'll support that. Any other questions or comments about the motion to table?
I have a procedural issue or question. One would be as it relates to replacement of, of commission members. I'll assume because I have, I haven't read the ordinance, that this is one that gets an appointment. Some of, some of them come from within and then some come by appointment from, from the mayor or some, somebody else. I'll assume you've already reviewed that and you can confirm that you do the appointment of replacements on Historic District.
We did and we looked at the terms of. So it's, it's mayor appointed, city council.
Okay, the, the second issue is. Since it's not reflected in the handout, are all the terms equally? I mean, they appear to be three-year terms. Are all of them three-year terms?
I think so, but they're staggered. So that they come in different terms.
Well, the reason why I say it is, as I look at the, at the handout, some of the, some of the terms would not have expired at this point. And if they haven't expired. We had a situation where this came up some years ago and I guess I've, I've been here long enough to see these things happen where we assume that somebody doesn't want to serve anymore. And we had an actual attempted vote to, to replace a member of a board or commission. And, and the person showed up at the next meeting and said, I never quit. And so I, I, my preference has been since that time, which has been about 10 years ago. If there's somebody whose term hasn't expired, they should either resign. Or if there is some process by which the board or commission has the power to remove them, that they take, take up that action. But I don't think that we have the power to replace people who haven't quit if they've been appointed. And so, and I'm not saying that that would be the attempt of the body to do that. But we should at least for housekeeping purposes, have those people say, I no longer intend to serve.
Well, I, I did, I mean, I, I agree with you. And that's why I contacted each one of them and talked to them about it. But they've all, they've all stepped, the ones, all the step, one stepped aside to make room for these new appointments. So they voluntarily stepped aside. And one reason is because it's been inactive for, for so long. And they were excited that there were new people who wanted to, to activate it. So. But I spoke, I called each, each member, spoke with many of them, I mean, all of them, many of them for a long period of time. And just listened to their, you know, their ideas and all of it. But they each voluntarily stepped down to make room for these appointments, except for one. And she's, and she's, and she's continued, she's, she's not been replaced.
Okay, I, I'm not, I'm not disputing whether they intend to resign. But I just think as a matter of practice, they should maybe write a letter saying, I, I'm resigning my position. Because if, if you sit in the council.
I can ask them to write, I can ask them to write a letter, but they have all voluntarily resigned. That's the reason I called them was to ask them if they wanted to continue to serve or would they rather, or would they consider stepping down? For someone else to take their place. And, I mean, and they all did. So, I mean, we can definitely get that in writing, but they've all. And if they don't do it in writing, then we won't replace them. I'll agree to that. But I'm not too concerned if they will do it. I've spoken with all of them pretty in-depth about it. It's an important issue for our city. And I had, I had good conversations with, with each one. And if they don't put it in writing, then, then we won't replace them. But they have all, they've all agreed to do that. The ones who are stepping down, the ones that are, the positions are being reappointed.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it not true that if we do not have a Historic District Commission in place? That the property owner, whether they're absentee or here, can tear down their building? And put up whatever kind of building they want? And the city has no leverage to stop them? So we will lose our historic. Buildings and our atmosphere?
Well, that's absolutely true. That's one of the points of having an Historic District. And the other one is you have to have an active Historic District Commission to enforce those standards. And we haven't had an active one in two and a half years. We had one meeting in two and a half years. Where it might be two at the most, but no more than that. And you have to have an active one. And I think because of COVID, everybody got a little bit of a break. But now all those things are, are coming back. And we, there are many other issues on top of that that require you to maintain in order to keep Historic District status. So that you keep tax credits. And absolutely, that's true. One, one of, one of the most, and the reason the state wants you to have a district, a Historic District Commission. Then they want you to adhere to this Historic District standards. So in order to do that, you need a local board. And if you don't have a local board, you can't enforce those standards. If you can't enforce those standards, they don't want you to be able to have a tax credit. It's really simple, very basic.
I don't think that was the concern, whether we should have a Historic District or not, or a commission.
I agree.
Things about the appointees and diversity and, and reaching out to some other people. That was the concern, I believe, that was here tonight.
And, and I, I mean, I think it is a diverse commission. One was, as, as far as expanding it, you know, as I said, I'm, I'm all for that. If we can do it. Then I'm for that. I'm on record right now, supporting it. And I'm also supportive of all the individuals that were mentioned. I don't have an objection to any of them, as long as they want to serve. You know, it's a volunteer position.
I agree with Ms. Ford. I mean, it's not that I don't want the Helena Historic District Commission. It, that was never the issue. We were just clarity and it's okay to ask questions. So I don't know where that came.
Absolutely.
And have opinions.
Yes.
I didn't mean that you didn't want the commission. I just wanted the public to understand the importance of the commission. In its whole, whoever's on it, ensure that we do have a historic atmosphere downtown. And that if, you know, in some cities, they've lost their historic commission. And the buildings have been torn down and metal buildings put up. I didn't have anything to do with the appointments or anything.
Oh, no, that's not how I understood it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, anyway, so any other questions or comments?
Just, I mean, just as, as a matter of clarity, for anybody who didn't understand or misunderstood or whatever. We have a Historic District Commission. We have one. We have one and it has members that have not been replaced. And, and they haven't met. We've just come through a year of COVID. They haven't met and perhaps some people don't want to serve anymore and need to be replaced or whatever. But, but we have a Historic District Commission. And so all of the, you know. I guess perceived panic over the need to replace people immediately is not, it's not warranted. We have one. Perhaps we have some people who don't want to continue to serve. And I think taking a few days or, or whatever is necessary to make sure we're all on the same page. And make sure all housekeeping is done to ensure that people who are currently serving and don't want to serve anymore. Is absolutely the right way to handle this. Because like I said, I've seen it before where people showed up and said, I didn't mean to quit. Well, I didn't want to quit. I never said I wanted to quit. And so I think all of these things are necessary and should be done, but we have a Historic District Commission. And we shouldn't leave people to believe anything other than that, whether intentional or unintentional. We have one and perhaps we have some new people who might be better to serve on the commission, like make it better, might have some new fresh ideas. And I think anytime you can get some new energy involved, it's, it's a good thing. But it's something that's worth talking about moving forward. But we do have a commission.
Thank you, Chris Jell. I'm gonna go ahead and call a question at this point. Motion on the floor is to table the appointments to Historic District Commission. There was a second. Ms. Rams Calbrook.
Etherly?
Yes.
Franklin? Forward?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
I have. Five yes and one absent.
So the motion to table the appointments to Historic District Commission has been tabled. The next item on the agenda is a salary adjustment. Ms. Turner, here?
Yes, sir. I'd like to come before the council to ask for a salary adjustment to $60,000. I'm sure that everyone on the council that are here, remember that 2017, I've been requesting. To have my salary adjusted to $60,000. In 2018, you guys moved me halfway there. You got me to $45,000. And you say you would try to give me the rest of the following year. But we had a going concern. I think in 2018, the mayor came in in 2019, tried to clearly go on concern. We got back on our feet in 2000 and 20. And so recently, in the past few weeks, we've been able to, to give raise employees. And so I, I'd like to ask for a salary adjustment to $60,000. And I, I'd also like to remind the council that I'm, I'm more than just the city treasurer. I'm also the city's finance director. I actually perform all of the accounting for the city. A lot of other cities that have an elected treasurer also have a finance director. And so I'm basically acting in that capacity for the city of Helena, West Helena. In that capacity, I ensure the compliance with Arkansas Beane Insurable Accounting Law. I prepare and administer the city's budget, annual budget, which is not any type of requirement, but any type of legal requirement for me to do so. I just do so because I think it's more efficient for me to do it. I do the revenue forecasting and maintain the general ledger. And so basically, I'm performing the city's accounting, the city's finance and the city's treasury functions. And I, I, I think it's good to have a treasurer. As you know, the, the elected position does not require you to have any type of accounting finance background. And so I think it's very beneficial to the city that you have someone in place now that's experienced and competent as well. And so I'd like you to take those things into consideration. And I ask for you to adjust my salary to $60,000. And, uh, I ask for you to, uh, adjust my salary to sixty thousand dollars.
I'm going to open that up for discussion. Any questions? Is there a motion? We have a lot of people on mute, so is there a motion on the question? Not hearing a motion, we'll move on. Uh, Ms. Turner will take that under advisement. If anybody has any questions, we'll entertain those between now and the next minute. And give you, give people a chance to do that. Bye. Thank you very much. So we're going to move on. Actually, we're going to move past the GUT proclamation. President Biden, uh, today signed a act for Congress to make June 10th now a national holiday. Um, where I originally proclaimed a holiday, as I did yesterday. Um, the city employees will, and, uh, enjoying the, uh, this new holiday. It is now a new national holiday. And I think that's exciting. When we first put this on the agenda, that wasn't the case. I don't think it even been brought up in Congress yet. Um, so I think that's our direct development, but we can move on because now it is a national holiday. It's not so relevant for us. Um, so approval of invoice for repairs to the dozer at the landfill, copied invoices in the packet. The cost of a new undercarriage, is thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and now I don't know if, uh, if Mr. Jones, uh, is on the call tonight to take any questions about that. So I'll wait and see if he is. So, uh, I can't tell honestly. Um, so what I'll, uh, we've had, you know, several meetings, uh, called. What, what I would do is the, uh, labor was taken out of the estimate, uh, and they, uh, in talking to him, I mean, if you'll see under item four on that invoice, it says, uh, labor zeros, they, they, so, the, the dozer question has two thousand approximately hours on it. Um, I spoke with, um, it, it is parts, some parts of it is under warranty that we don't have to pay for, but most of the undercarriage is not under warranty after, after that many hours. Um, essentially, you know, uh, it, it has to be replaced. That's, that's the cost, and y'all have to approve it. I will just say this, um, we're trying to close cell four by July the fifteenth. You, uh, Philip Fields, who's our civil engineer on the landfill, he submits our report on the landfill closure. In order to get the money that, um, comes to the city, uh, or is available to the city upon closure of that sale, we have to close it and we have to submit that report. Because of the rains, the spring, uh, you know, it affects everything. It includes, it affected the landfill. Um, it's going to take everything, uh, that we have to make that deadline. So I did ask Mr. Fields to also go out there and, and look at this and, and give me his opinion as well. And everybody involved with it agrees that, uh, that we have to do that in order to make this deadline. And then John Deere graciously agreed to remove the labor costs, uh, to, in order to lessen the, uh, cost of it. So that's, that's my report on it. And unless there's somebody else on the call, I don't see you going to add to that. So if not, I'll take questions. Okay, is there a motion to approve the, uh, invoice to repair the undercarriage of the dozer at the landfill?
You're warning us, Mr. Mayor, do I understand you wanting us to approve the, uh, the purchase of the new undercarriage? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. The dozer is down because the undercarriage, um, I hope y'all can hear me. Internet's a little unstable, but the undercarriage is damaged, the dozer is down. We need it working in order to make that deadline. And so in order to pay that, it's Okay. And it requires a motion, a simple motion in a second.
As far as you know, that's the only cost associated with the repair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to, uh, to, uh, pay the invoice for the repair of the dozer.
So news that we, makes a motion that we approved the invoice for the repair of the dozer and the amount of the invoice attached in the packet, which I'm going to restate, um, thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. And that is, again, they removed the labor cost and some, so we got it down pretty, pretty close to the bottom. Anyway, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Mr. Etherly seconds the motion. Uh, any discussion or co- or questions about the motion?
Yes, from me. Um, there was some previous discussion about this and perhaps some concern. I do not recall what those were, and so I wanted to, uh, uh, rehash that.
Well, I think, and, uh, uh, I'm certainly can be, um, corrected if my memory is inaccurate, but I believe the questions were pretty much mostly about the, um, items that would be under warranty or not. And the warranty service, uh, is based on the hours. It, it's received and a lot of use. Um, and, and so the proving is not under warranty, but they did agree to remove the labor costs, um, which I thought was generous. Uh, that answers your question.
I mean, unless, unless somebody else had some, some different concern, it, it, uh,
Any other questions or comments? If not, if not, Calro.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin? Davis?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Franklin? I have four yes and two absent.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Um, the next item on the agenda is the ordinance number sixteen. Um, and, uh, Ms. Ramsey can help me explain this, but basically, if you recall, you approved a purchase of an asphalt hot box. Um, it has been a purchase and it has been received, and it's sitting out there at the, uh, street department. The, uh, the order to get our records correct, the original motion was for twenty-six thousand, fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. The actual cost turned out to be thirty-one thousand, six, twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. And the reason for the difference is that the attachment was added, um, that originally wasn't included in the initial invoice. And when it was delivered, it was included. Um, so the question is, um, I'm sorry, the question on the table is whether to approve the, uh, actual cost, the thirty-one, six, twenty-seven, seventy-five. I'll open that for questions or comments.
The attachment was taken off and then it was put back on?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
The price for the attachment was taken off when we passed it, and that was been put back on, right? Is that correct?
Essentially, yes. Uh, yes, essentially correct. It was delivered with the attachment.
Is it needed?
And, and I, Mr. Jones, I'm not here on here, but, uh, Mr. Jones says it is, it is needed and recommends approval.
Just wondering.
I'm here.
Okay, would, you want, would you, you want to address that question?
Uh, well, of course, I, I couldn't hear a while ago.
About the attachment, what is it? Why did we did include it in the original motion?
Uh, what, what, what was this about? Like I said.
The hot box, the asphalt box.
Okay, is that about the truck pulling it?
Uh, no, it's about the attachment. When we, when we approved the original motion, uh, for the original price, it did not include that attachment. And then when it was delivered, it had the attachment with it, and we wanted to keep it.
Uh, yes, sir.
And so, but, but they have to approve the additional cost.
Oh, okay. That was for the sealer machine, right?
Right.
Yes, sir.
So anyway, I'm sorry.
We do.
Miss, ever, go ahead.
Uh, what was your question, Ms. Ford?
My question was, in the beginning, when we approved it for the original amount, uh, that part was not a, a part of the approval. Uh, I think, uh, we said that it wasn't needed or whatever. So what, what made you change your mind and say that it's needed now?
We, we didn't say we didn't need the sealer machine. We didn't say that. I think what it was, they left the price off. But when Mr. Valley and myself, uh, uh, mentioned it to you, we did say, that's one of the things the mayor discussed with Ohio was seal the leaks. So, I mean, it, it was on there, uh, and, and the price supposed to have been added into that. And somehow, I guess, when they build a city back later, they end up putting that price on. But we did, I mean, we did ask for the sealer.
Okay, I, I, I recall that I asked about the prices that were presented. There were three prices, and I was wondering why did we go with the lowest? And I think your response is probably on record that, uh, it was because they put some, there was something on there that we didn't need. Now we.
No, it wasn't a sealer machine.
I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know what it was, but there were three prices. Uh, there was a price that, that was presented to, uh, us on the invoice, which was more. But we, 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 uh, approved a price that was less because there was something on there that wasn't, uh, that we didn't need.
Yes, ma'am. They wanted to charge us for a tool rack. I think that was eight hundred and something dollars. We didn't need that. A tool rack, when we can put the tools on back of a truck. Then they, I think they wanted to charge us for a lift for the sealer, for the sealer machine, and we refused that. We didn't need that. So, I mean, it wasn't that heavy that we had to have a crank to lift the machine up and put it on back of that asphalt box trailer. So those were the things that we did, uh, tell, uh, KMG that we didn't need. You are right about, about the price and, and the things that we did. I mean, when, when we, uh, it was two or three quotes, but those two items that we didn't need.
Right.
But I, I did say we need the sealer machine.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor? Joe, thank Columbia. I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, uh, amending ordinance number fourteen. Uh, thirty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents.
Um, uh, thank you, Mr. St. Columbia. His motion on the floor.
There you go.
Excuse me, uh, proceed, Mayor.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that question. You thought about, you're thinking, you're, yeah, go ahead.
Is your motion to suspend the rules, uh, placed on the third and final read, reading the title on the St. Columbia?
Absolutely, yes, sir. I'm sorry I didn't mention that.
And Ms. Ford, is your second, uh, in agreeing with it?
It, it is, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, and it's basically a cleanup ordinance. It looks like a brand new ordinance, but that was kind of my question, but, uh, but either way, I think it works. So, uh, does everybody understand the motion? Any other questions or comments? If not, call roll.
Davis?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin? Etherly?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Franklin? Four yes, two absent.
Uh, Madam Clerk, I'm still not to a place where my computer is. Can you read the, the title of the ordinance, please?
Yes, it's ordinance number sixteen. This ordinance amends ordinance number fourteen. An ordinance waiving competitive bidding in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated section fourteen fifty-eight, three oh three, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase an asphalt hot box for the city of Helena, West Helena, and for other related purposes.
There now needs to be a motion to adopt.
So is there a motion for adoption, uh, of order sixteen? St. Columbia moves adoption, final adoption of ordinance number sixteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ford seconds the motion. Any, any questions or comments about the motion? If not, call roll.
Etherly?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Franklin? St. Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin? Four yes.
Motion passes. Now, is there an emergency clause? I think there is. So we need a motion for the emergency clause.
I move for the emergency clause. I shall move.
Mr. St. Columbia moves adoption of the emergency clause to the ordinance number sixteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ford seconds the motion for adoption of emergency clause, ordinance number sixteen. Any other question, any questions or comments? Not call roll.
Franklin? Davis?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin? Four yes.
Motion passes. Um, so we have adoption of, uh, ordinance number sixteen. Thank, thank you very much. Cleanup, basically cleanup language so we can get our books corrected. Um, the next item on the agenda is ordinance number seventeen, the waiving bidding for the purchase of an articulated dump truck for the landfill. Um, we've kind of approached this issue before. We never really, uh, finished it, the discussion, and I don't believe, I'm not sure if we had the ordinance ready. Maybe we did, and we didn't have, uh, form. I don't remember now. But at any rate, uh, we need to, uh, discuss this, so what it is, and, um, uh, Mr. Jones, stay on, on here with me. Um, we have an old dump truck, just to, to sum it up. We have an old dump truck at the landfill. Um, they're, they're able to keep it going. Uh, it's slow. It breaks down some. Uh, going back to what I said earlier, especially, uh, with the closure of the landfill of, of, um, cell four, I'm sorry. And then we reo- or we've opened the new cell. Um, again, um, asked Mr. Fields if he would, um, also look into it. And this is something we've been looking into, and I went out there myself and looked at it. Um, I, I guess my recommendation would be that, um, that we, that we consider approving this. Um, if we don't have an active dump truck, we have to shut down the landfill. If we shut down the landfill, we can't take customers. If we don't take customers, we don't make money. Um, we have a dump truck on lease that's cost us, Mr. Jones, how much is it? cost us, Mr. Jones, how much is it? And Mr. Turner has been costing us about how much? Uh, four, five thousand dollars a, a week? Is that right? Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct. That's correct.
Um, and essentially, we can buy one for what we've leased it for. The bigger question is, do we need one permanently? And, uh, the answer that I've received, the people smarter than me, I guess, is, uh, is that, is that we do. We need it first to close that cell. Um, secondly, to get our landfill in, uh, full compliance with state laws and federal laws and regulations. And also in doing so, uh, to have, to have, uh, I guess, that assurance or reassurance that if the other truck does finally go down, we have one already. And we don't have to close the landfill while we go through this. I will tell you that I hope this doesn't continue, but um, and it's been reported all over that since the pandemic, it's been incredibly difficult, particularly with implements. Um, but everything, cars, um, our sky cops right now are waiting on computer chips. So every, everything is behind and everything takes longer and costs more. And with inflation, the cost of these things, and because of the um, shortage of them, um, the, the prices of these things go up rapidly. Um, so for all of those reasons, the recommendation, uh, by the team on this is that we go forward with this purchase. But I want to ask Mr. Jones if he wants to add to that or at least be available for questions.
I'm moving we, uh, buy the new dump truck.
Okay, motion on the floor, Mr. Franklin moves, uh, that we put ordinance number seventeen, uh, on third and final reading uh, to purchase the dump truck. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. St. Columbia seconds the motion. It's an ordinance waiving competitive bidding in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated section fourteen fifty-eight three oh three, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase property from the city of Helena, West Helena, for other related purposes. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have this, uh, I have this right here. If there's any other equipment that the landfill needs, instead of bringing these piecemeals back, let's get everything that, that everybody needs. So we can, when the next financial statement come out, we can have a, a clear financial statement on how the city will be operating in the next few months. I would like to see that, uh, brought because I, if, if we spend it five thousand dollars a week on rental, then that's a problem. It should have been brought to, I mean, well, whatever, but I would like to see if there's any equipment needed at the landfill that makes this city money. Let's find out what it is. Let's get it done. So we won't lose our landfill.
Yes, sir. Um, any other, and, and, um, and let me say that that, that is going on right now. Uh, has been going on and some discussions are going on with, um, USDA rural development about trying to help us uh, with some of those, some of those needs, not just at the landfill, but, um, but for the whole city. I know one thing, um, well, there are a lot of things that really the landfill needs. Um, I hope we'll be talking about in, in the near future. Other questions or comments? It's not called up.
Davis?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Five, yes, one absent.
So the next, um, ordinance number seventeen for final approval, final adoption to purchase the dump truck.
So move.
Ms. Franklin moves adoption, final adoption of this number seventeen. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. St. Columbia seconds the motion. Any questions or comments about the motion? If not, call the room.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Davis? Forward?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Davis? Four, yes, two absent.
Motion passes. Um, the next item would be the adoption of the emergency clause for ordinance number seventeen.
So move.
Ms. Franklin moves adoption of ordinance number seventeen. Uh, emergency clause for ordinance number seventeen. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. St. Columbia seconds the motion. Any questions or comments about the motion? Knock, call the room.
Franklin?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Forward?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Five, yes, one absent.
Motion, motion carries. Thank, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is, is, uh, equally important. Um, again, Mr. Jones, I hope you stay on here for this one. Um, it's probably also widely reported the difficulty that, uh, everyone has had in finding employees. Um, we've had a very big difficulty in filling CDL positions. Um, and I will let, you know, Mr. Jones wants to, he can address that, that we, we've had a, we just had a real void. Uh, and, and we do, uh, we do widely circulate these advertisements for CDL positions. And, uh, we come up with bricks and we have to have CDL drop, CDL drivers
To tie us.
to pick up our, our garbage for, um, for any number of things. Our supervisors have, um, and I include Mr. Jones, our director, have CDLs and they've had to fill in, uh, not that they don't already, because they do, they already drive these trucks and, uh, but they've had to do really double duty because we don't have the CDLs. How many do we have, Mr. Jones, right now, besides?
Besides me, Mr. Romack and Wilbert, uh, just two. Yeah, just two draft.
And, um, in talking to, uh, and, and Mr. Jones and, and other people, uh, CDL drivers that I know, um, one of the, I mean, basically, if you have CDL and you're willing to be on the road all the time, you can make a lot of money.
Yes.
Um, if you're, if you want to make, have a regional route where you're back home at the end of the day with your family, and then you have to be willing to make less money, but you don't have to be on the road all the time.
Yeah.
Um, so when you look at that competitive rate for those drivers, CDL drivers, um, Mr. Jones and others have recommended that we adopt, that we change the base pay to starting salary of seventeen dollars an hour. Mr. Jones, you want to add to that?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, in the past, usually, uh, 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 new driver getting out of school, starting sa- salary for that driver will probably be about forty-five, fifty thousand dollars. We're in dire needs of a driver. I mean, we done went from probably seven CDL drivers now to two. And you got truckers right here now trying to pay new drivers eighty to seventy thousand dollars to get on board with them. That's how, that's how bad it is for people trying to get CDL drivers. And with this fifteen dollars, just not getting, I'm hoping that at that seventeen dollar scale, we can get somebody in here. So we've been advertising now just about a whole year and still haven't been able to get a CDL driver. So I'm, I'm asking if we can increase it from fifteen dollars to seventeen dollars. Maybe that would help.
Any, any questions or comments about that?
This is, this is just my opinion. Uh, a couple, when we asked you all that, about six months ago, we gave a couple of dollars to get this, uh, I, I think everybody said, they said that would be a, a good start. Well, I figure like this, the treasurer just asked for some more money. And, uh, you all have, uh, other deputy, deputy directors that need to be adjusted. So I figure like this. I take the finances because we have been doing a lot lately and the paper will say the city's on a spending spree. They won't say why we doing it, but the newspaper company will say. They won't, they won't put, put your pitch in the paper, Mr., they'll put your pitch in the paper, Mr. Jones. Or they won't put other folks' pitch in the paper about the increases. Now, I wish that you all would come up with an agreement, get all this stuff together. Talk to the treasurer, the treasurer just asked for some money. Now the CDL drivers, you got other folks, what you, what we need to do. And I don't, I hate to put you off, but we need to have a budget workshop to, because we have spent a lot. I'm not trying to push nobody out, but I think we need to schedule this for the, the second meeting in July. Not to put you off, but we need to get a clear statement on where we are. Because we have, we've gave, I, I, I've been a, a part of giving these raises. I don't have a problem giving anybody anything. But, uh, at this point, we need to check the record to see where we are. I understand you need to, drivers, I understand. If, if we got some adjustments to do, then let's do it, but let's check the finances. Ms. Ramblin, uh, Mr. Turner, uh, can y'all try to get together and schedule us a budget workshop? So we can see what our finances are. If we have to do it quicker than two weeks, than, 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 we're doing quicker than what I stated earlier, let's do one for next week or whatever we can do. But right now, we've given out a lot of money. And we need to know where we are. When these checks start hitting the bank, we don't want to say we can't afford it. We don't want to have to take nothing back. So I think we need to, at this point, have a budget workshop, if your people can hold on, uh, until we can have a workshop to see what can the city stand, because I, I've been a part of giving raises. People need raises, uh, and I think we need to try to find a way for the city collecting more revenue so we can keep giving raises. At this point, we need to check our finance and check our pocketbook and see what we got. I'm not saying no. I would like to sit out, have a meeting to check our pocketbook to see what we got. So we won't have to say we got to take some, something back. So if that's, if, if the body would just work for me, uh, Jones, I know you want, uh, your people to have it, but if, let us see what we have. If your department has, has the money, get with Mr. Turner, Ms. Ramblin, let's show what we can give it. And if you can sustain that, let's go.
Can I ask this question? Uh, Ms. Ramblin and, and Mr. Turner, do we have that money? I mean, would it hurt that out street, uh, street and sanitation budget for driving? I mean, these, these people paying for the garbage to be picked up. We bringing in money. I understand where you're coming from.
I understand, Mr. Jones, but, but think about this. We just bought a, we just, we, we just bought a hot box. We bought some attachments. I understand people are paying for the truck and, and then we're gonna have another question in a minute. Can we buy some new garbage trucks? And we bought three garbage trucks, so we're gonna have that discussion later. So I think it's only fair that we can have a budget workshop next week, tomorrow if we want to, but we need to check and check our finances.
Well, I, I, I agree with you. I have no problem with it. That's fine. I agree.
Because see, I don't, do you want to give your folks the money and then next we've got to take it back?
No, no, I agree with you. I mean, I don't wait the whole year, you know, you know.
Uh, uh, Mrs. Jones, Mrs. Jones, remember?
I can wait a couple more weeks.
Mrs. Jones.
Well, let me, if I could, if I could interject something, uh, right there. I'm going to say this is one example of, uh, why Mr. Turner is very valuable to us. Uh, we check with him, or I check with him, uh, on at least a weekly basis, um, on all of our financials. And, um, and also look at the source material myself. I know where we are financially. We're in a very good place financially. Um, and the question is we raised our sanitation fees on our citizens. Um, with the rain, uh, with the other things y'all already know about, it's, it's already a struggle to keep up with, um, with basically what used to be two cities. And if you don't have CDL like drivers on these trucks, you can't, you can't, you can't put them in behind the wheel. Um, that exposes us to a ton of liability, uh, losses if we do. And we've been there before. So it's actually more expensive than, um, and mo- more, more liability exposure, uh, if we don't do this than if we do. So sometimes these are investments. And you need a return on that investment. Um, the taxpayers want to see a return on investment on the sanitation fee that was raised. I don't blame them. Um, and if we don't have CDL drivers to do it, we had one of our deputy directors out sick. And, and that got us behind and our, our citizens weren't happy. And many of them pointed out that we, uh, we raised the sanitation fee.
Yep.
So a- as far as whether we can pay it, we can ask Mr. Turner right now. I think the answer is yes. I would also say, I would also say that you could make, we have talked many times about the CDL with, this is I've been mayor. And from right, we tell right now, our opening page thirteen, our beginning starting page thirteen thirteen. That's not even close. Um, fifteen would be a good starting place, seventeen with experience. If we really want to get serious about having enough drivers to keep up with garbage collections and, and, uh, and roadside, uh, collections and all the rest of that. And I, Ms. Turner, though, that's a fair question, Ms. Turner. Can we, can we afford that?
What, what can I say before Mr. Turner answer that? That's all I got to say. If you say, if you, if you say that the CDL's drivers need seventeen dollars, is that what you're saying?
I would recommend seventeen dollar base pay because we're having a very difficult time.
Hold on, I just needed yes or no. So, because we, because up in, up in the seat, what?
Yes, that, yes, that's my recommendation.
Okay, so, so wait, I got enough, I got two more for you. You said Mr. Turner, that's why Mr. Turner should have his raise, right?
I think he's, I think he's worth everything.
Okay, so, so, okay.
And I don't think, I can, no, I don't think, I know, I know, we wouldn't be in the financial position we are today. If I didn't have Mr. Turner to work with, uh, I can, that's the answer to your question.
Okay, so.
So you have to look at the value of somebody, not just, not just what you're paying them, but what the return on investment that person is.
I understand it.
And I can guarantee you, we wouldn't be in the financial position we are today if I hadn't had Mr. Turner to work with. Absolutely.
Okay, and, okay.
I'd like to have a floor.
Hold on.
I'd like to have a floor.
I got a question. I got a question. So, Mr. Mayor, you saying, so now, this is what I'm trying to do. If you saying the, the, the treasurer, right, what about your deputy directors, the ones that not get paid the fifty thousand dollars? Mr. Jones, you, you just said that one of the, one of them were out sick, right? You paying one deputy director fifty? Don't you think we ought to, so we can get all this done tonight? If Mr. Turner and Ms. Ramblin, we can afford all this?
Well, let's, let's, let's do it then.
Hold on, wait, Mr. Mr. Hold on, Mr. Jones. Hold on, Mr. Jones.
Let's do it then, if the mayor okay with it.
Hold on, Mr. Jones, hold on. Hold on, I got this. Just hold on. I'm trying to, I, I got this. So if everybody's in, if, if this, if we can afford all this is what you say, now notice you're, you're the CEO of this city. You're saying that we can afford all this. My motion would be this. Pay Mr. Turner sixty, pay the CDL driver the seventeen, pay the deputy, the two deputy directors the fifty, and that's my motion. Let's move. If this is what you're saying, we can afford. Notice, now Ms. Sandy had this in the record. The mayor said we can afford this, right? Am I right, Mayor? Am I right?
There's two-part answer. I never said that. However, I would support that motion.
Yes, well, well, when it comes back.
Ninety-day probationary.
So I mean, but I gotta know, is that your motion?
I just said that was my motion. I just said that was, since you can support.
There's a motion on the floor. Would you, would you restate your motion?
My motion is, the city treasurer asked for sixty, the two deputy directors give them fifty, give the, uh, CDL drivers the seventeen dollars. Only if the mayor says we can afford it and the city clerk and the tr- and the treasurer said we can afford, let's give it because I don't want to, I don't want to stop nobody. I don't want nobody to say that you gave the CDL driver and didn't give me, so let's give everybody what they want.
Can I say something? My, my response to you is, would be that, that, that the, and this is my response. My response is that the city council is responsible for the financial management of the city. I give you a month of financial statement. Uh, city council can look at the financial statement and if you decide after, after your review of the, uh, financial statement that we can afford it, then, 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 then that's your decision. I'm not gonna make that decision for you, that's me, I don't know what the mayor's gonna do, I'm not gonna make a decision for the city council, I just made a request.
We do, we do have a motion on the floor, so let me just ask first of all, is there a second? And then we'll go, we'll go quickly and recognize everybody's questions or comments, but is there a second to the motion? Why it's more time, is there a second, Mr. Franklin's motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, this Joe's like Columbia, may I have a floor?
I think he's dropped off the meeting, he's having connectivity.
Sounds like we were having problems here.
Miss, Miss Columbia, go ahead, um, the mayor dropped off, go ahead with your statement.
Okay, if I might have the floor for just a second, I, my son works with the college, in fact, he's head of that department. Uh, if you see those big trucks down there in, uh, Midland Heights. Uh, and they test and train, train CDL drivers. Uh, those jobs are valid, and they're, uh, dearly wanted. Their opportunities for, uh, jobs, uh, for CDL drivers. I don't think seventeen dollars is enough. I, I, I'll be honest with you, when I was in the beer business, I paid more than that to have a CDL driver. And, uh, to have a good one, and they took care of my equipment and all. I think, uh, Mr. Jones is asking for a meager amount for seventeen dollars. I think it ought to be twenty to twenty-two dollars an hour for that job, driving those trucks like that. And if we don't have them to pick up the garbage after we've raised the garbage rates in this community, uh, I, I'm afraid our citizens of this community is not gonna like that. That job is important, it's, uh, most important, handling our city equipment. And I think seventeen is a, a very small amount to ask for. It's fifteen now, and I think we need to go to seventeen, or if not twenty dollars if we can afford it. Uh, so that's my thinking on the matter, because I know what those jobs, uh, are worth, and they're bidding on. I, I admire the people that will stay with us for, for fifteen, that, that's remarkable. They can get a job tomorrow, uh, making a lot, lot more money. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
If, if I may have a point of clarity, you all been discussing this back and forth, but clarity is, the current rates that are set were, though, they were requested by the, uh, Public Works Department. Um, the last time that the council approved it, because the, the medical reflect that, they said that was the rate that, that would, that would be supported. Uh, the issue is that, that they were incorrect about that, and now they asked for this, but for clarity, the council didn't fight the last, uh, council didn't fight the, the last amount, and that, and we're not going against it. Uh, but at this point, the, the question is whether they want to prove it from fifteen up to seventeen. Cause last time y'all went thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, to get on experience, uh, Mr. Jones, my question for clarity is, are you saying a, a scale like you did last time, the last time you had a scale of thirteen, fourteen, fifteen? Uh, could you, could you be, uh, clear as to what exactly is your request?
Seventeen dollars, starting out at the door, Mr. Valley.
I understand, but it's the last time you made the question, you said you had a, a, a graduate scale thirteen, uh, fourteen, fifteen, depending on experience. I'm just asking, glad, are you saying something similar to that now, uh, because while you're discussing, uh, let's make it clear so everybody be on the same page.
Okay, I, I'm asking to start all drivers, CDL drivers off with seventeen dollars, starting pay.
That's not enough.
Oh, I know it's not, you know, let me.
Are you still asking for a graduate scale, I'm asking, like, like you did last time, with, with.
Not right now, I'm asking that the starting pay be seventeen dollars, just starting out, not like I did with the thirteen with one year experience. Fourteen, two years experience, I mean, we in dire needs a driver, I'm asking starting pay is seventeen dollars starting now.
I go along with that.
If I understand the current base pay, thirteen dollars and thirteen cent for starting out, and with experience, it's a scale up to fifty. All I was asking clarity is, are you saying seventeen starting out and a scale for his experience? That's what I'm just trying to make sure that, that we have.
Well, if you want to put it that way, then with experience, let's put it at twenty dollars. You know, you come in there with, 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 with at least five, three to five years experience, let's go with twenty dollars.
I think you're right there.
But the starting pays, you know, I'm requesting this seventeen dollars. You know, starting now, but if you got one to three, I mean, three to five years experience, we, 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 we can go with twenty dollars. I mean, like I said, it's hard to get CDL drivers, it's hard. We got the, we got the Hilton West Ellen School District, don't know what they gonna do next, I mean, this year, they got three CDL drivers. When they didn't have probably ten to twelve drivers, three drivers to start the school district off with, in August.
You take companies like Walmart or High, starting about sixteen, seventy thousand dollars.
Yes. And Mr. Jones, uh, a point of clarity, I was speaking about operators, not CDL drivers, but my thought was, that if you're gonna do it, you probably also look at experience as well, because the CDL driver was zero experience. Uh, probably shouldn't be getting paid the same thing at home, but great experience, but that's the issue for the council, I just wanted clarity for comments.
Like, like I said, if they got, I mean, let's just do this, if they got five years experience, let's start, I mean, that's, the starting pay is seventeen dollars coming in. Uh, if they got five years experience, let's go with twenty dollars. If we can do it that way. I want to change that base pay from what, uh, from that, coming in the door at thirteen dollars, fourteen dollars to seventeen dollars. And if they got five years experience, span, we'll hit them with twenty. And that, like I said, I agree with you, that'd be for the CDL drivers. Equipment operator don't have to have CDL license.
You'd be more apt to get, uh, people to work for you, with that kind of money.
Yes.
What you guys are just doing.
Myself, I, I, I'm, I'm jumping in a garbage truck, uh, uh, you know, sometimes to fill in, that's, I mean, if I'm not in a dr- garbage truck, I'm in the boom truck. So it's just not the sanitation department, it's the street, both departments, street department, street and sanitation.
Will there be a rate increase after the ninety day probationary period? If so, what would it be? And then, uh, tell me your pros and cons against a sign on bonus.
A sign on bonus, I mean, if we can do that, uh, like most, uh, company do, they do like, uh, tw- from, a thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars sign on bonus. I mean, that would be up to y'all, if y'all want to do it that way, you know.
I wouldn't go there on that. But I think we all.
You'd be getting new drivers, I mean, I agree with you, we, like I say, we start off with CDL driver, seventeen dollars in the experience driver, got five years experience, let's give him twenty.
That's right. You'd keep your people too.
The second part of that question was after the ninety day probationary period, what?
That'd be after six month probation period, yeah, I mean, depends on how they work out. You know, I, I can come back, that'll be up, left up to the body, if we want to give them a little raise after that, that would be left up to y'all. But I would recommend if we did a couple of dollars, dollars, so, a couple of dollars, depends on their work performance, attendance record and all. You know, I base it on evaluation.
You saying after six, six months, instead of nine, ninety days, right, you saying after six months?
No, it's six month probation period.
Okay.
I thought it was ninety days.
No, ma'am.
I need to.
Ma'am? I mean, that's where it always been with probation period.
No.
Ain't been ninety days, been six months. One hundred and eighty days. We have never had a six, I mean, a ninety day probation period.
Mr. Valley?
Yes, sir, I, I, I think Mr. Jones referred to the base paper, say Columbia and Ms., Mrs. Davis. Uh, the base pay, this, 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 this one hundred and eighty day, six months.
What do we need to do to move forward on this request?
Well, I, I didn't prepare a base pay, I didn't, I wouldn't aware of this, this amount or this discussion. I don't know if Mr. Turner, uh, made it to base pay, Mr. Turner, do you have any base pay?
Yes, I'm, to, I changed it to seventeen, I thought they told you that we, when we were up here Saturday.
Yeah, uh, okay.
Yeah, that's the only thing I changed, was it, was the CDL to seventeen.
Right. Well, Mr. Columbia, if you're for the CDL being seventeen, I don't think I'd do it to the most, to, to suspend the rules, place on third final reading and, uh, uh, read the title only.
I saw a move to do that, that's for seventeen, that's to start them out with.
Right, that's the, what Turner said's the only thing in the base pay, I didn't see the base pay in my packet, but the only thing in the base pay would be the, uh, the change to seventeen dollars.
Yeah, it's highlighted.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Read the title on.
Mr. Valley?
Yes, Ms. Rams.
The motion that was made by Mr. Franklin had three other raises in there, is this included in your motion?
No, I don't think this in this base pay, it's seventeen dollars, that's all the one, what Sonne Columbia is doing.
Okay, got you.
The other failed for lack of a second.
Got you, okay.
That's correct. So I got a motion on the floor. Mr. Ethely, you're conducting meetings since the mayor is not present?
I, I think I see the man.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Uh, my computer lost internet for some reason. Okay, there's, I just on the floor, I believe, to suspend rules to put, um, to maybe adopt some of the revised, base pay ordinance regarding seventeen dollars an hour for CDL drivers. Is there a second? Somebody say, one more time, because my hearing's not that great apparently. Um, is there a second to the motion to adopt seventeen dollars an hour for CDL drivers? Okay, hearing no second, Mr. Columbia, the motion fails.
Let me, uh, throw in a comment here, because, uh, there was a question asked about whether we could, we could afford to do it. And the response that I heard from the mayor was I support it, but, um, I'm not saying we can afford it. And response that I heard from the treasurer was, it's up to you to determine whether or not we can afford it by reviewing your financial documentation, and then making an individual assessment or an assessment as a group. And so at this point, since nobody is saying, and I'm not making that assessment on my, on my own, that we can do it. Nobody here is saying, yeah, you can do it, you can do it, I've made that assessment myself, and I'll tell you, or advise you that you can do it. I can't go forward without doing that due diligence myself. And I merely state that to say that's my individual position on this, that's not saying I'm opposed to any, any request that anybody has made. But until I have done the homework, uh, I'm not prepared to take action.
That's fine, we can move on, I just do want to clarify that, um, I was talking about the other motion when I said that, but, um, I also said that we can't afford to not do this with CDL drivers, because we need, uh, good CDL drivers. We need drivers who aren't going to expose us, expose us to liability costs and none of the things. And our citizens, uh, expected, I believe, but, um, but the motion died for lack of a second, so we'll move on, um, and if there's no objection, I know it's getting late. Um, y'all can look at these three resolutions, but I was, with Mr. Valley still on, especially I wanted to move to the last action item. And then we can go back up if you want to, it's up to, it's totally up to y'all, but, um, if we could move to the ion wave technologies agreement, software dealing bidding. Uh, it's, uh, it's an agreement, but it looks suspiciously like a contract. Uh, it doesn't, it's not an annual renewal, it's not, it doesn't, it's, it can be ended at any time, it's, uh, about three thousand dollars, if my memory serves me, I'm not looking at it, I think it's in here, maybe, um, a year. What it does is create a bidding software platform for our website, and a vendor platform, so that vendors can be registered, um, with the city to do business with the city. And they can also see the projects, if they want to submit invoices, uh, even if it's not officially a bid process. But if there is an official bid, bid process, uh, then they can do that, and they'll, they'll also, the project that we submit, will then participate in something called Arkansas Bid, which is a bidding platform statewide that lots of vendors subscribe to, so that they can bid on projects, so it exposes more vendors on particularly bigger projects. And, um, and it, and arguably would keep us from having to suspend the rules to weigh bidding on some things. But that's what it does, Mr. Valley, you want to add to that?
Uh, yes, uh, man, this, this contract, uh, if you, if you follow it to its, to its, to its length, uh, the, the five years, it, it covers, uh, more than the mayor's spending limit, uh, it, it is a contract. Uh, as the mayor, uh, property said, it is for the purpose of streamlining, as well as creating, uh, somewhat of incubator of our bidding, uh, so that people can go and look and see what projects we have. Uh, the city can place it on the city's, uh, website, and for more efficiency, and where, it would partially cure some of the issues that you all been having about last minute stuff, and not knowing when we need this, need that. Uh, but the, the purpose of it was, is, uh, uh, for greater clarity, uh, for the public, as well as for the city council and the mayor and administration knowing, uh, having a central place where you have your bids, and, and, and people can submit beers for projects, and people can know what they are. One of the complaints that the mayor's been trying to address is simply, uh, uh, people saying they, they don't have information about beers. Then the other thing too is, it, it creates a, a, a level where we're looking at, uh, people being licensed and bonded and et cetera. Uh, but, uh, with that, I yield to the mayor.
Uh, the only thing I would say, it doesn't lock us into four year or five year, it's, it's.
Correct, it doesn't lock us into four year, I'm saying, if you spend over the time period.
I'm sorry, there, there is an appropriation clause, and it begins to be on the first, um, if it's approved. If you look at the annual though, it, I misspoke a little bit, it's forty-five hundred a year, uh, it's twenty-two fifty for the remainder of this year. I just wanted to clarify. Any questions or comments about that? I hope y'all can hear me. Okay, Mr. Valley, we need a motion to approve that, is that right?
Yes, sir, this is the most, simple most of the proof to authorize you to decide it.
So, the question on the floor, I guess, is a motion to approve a contract on wave technologies, um, that will provide software at forty-five, forty-five hundred a year with no obligation to.
Right, uh, this, this is one of those, this is one of those things that's made to fall squarely within the serial contract. Uh, actually, the five thousand, it's less than five thousand for the year, but upfront, we know that it's forty-five hundred dollars a year if, if the mayor so chooses. And so, he would have authority to decide it right now for forty-five, for forty-five hundred dollars and not have to consult y'all about it to the extent that it's budgeted. Uh, but because it's, 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 uh, over five thousand dollars in total, uh, if the mayor satisfied with their, with their, uh, services, then, uh, that's the primary reason this is being presented to you. Because in and of itself, with just one year, he, he could sign this long as it's budgeted, and, and Mr. Turner could tell you whether it's been budgeted and appropriated.
What is it?
It's forty-five hundred. Actually, for this fiscal year, it would be twenty. Excuse me, it's, it's in, it's in the material. Just.
Go ahead.
Twenty-two thousand, it's behalf of that, and I think there's a five hundred dollar training fee, I'm not sure if that's listed or not. Twenty-two, twenty-two fifty.
Yeah, you said twenty-two thousand, I think you meant twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars.
Anyway, I'm sorry, it's twenty-two fifty for this fiscal year, so that's really the appropriation. And I'm, I'm going to say twenty-seven fifty because I believe there's a five hundred dollar training fee, it's not, that I don't see in here. So I'm going to say twenty-seven fifty for this fiscal year. And I guess if it's renewed, forty-five hundred in the future.
What is it?
Oh, it's ion wave technology software, so, uh, what it is, is a software platform you add to our website so that vendors can register it, uh, with the city to be, you know, qualified vendors with the city. You can also, uh, post projects and bidding projects on the web, on our website, at the same time submit them to Arkansas Bid, which is a statewide bidding program that vendors from all over the country subscribe to so that they can bid on these projects, so it exposes us. And we don't pay a fee to participate in that, but the software company does, and we get that included.
How much is it?
Uh, twenty-seven fifty this year and forty-five hundred a year if it renews in future.
I mean, it's, it's twenty-seven fifty in, in the budget for, uh, software support. It's more, I mean, it's enough to cover that.
I, I'm really bringing it up because, uh, Mr. Valley suggests it's a contract, and it, and it is a, you know, well, you've got it in your packet, so I'd rather err on the side of that than, than Mr. Valley's recommendation than it's, it's under my spending limit, but it's, it looks like a, it's, as Ms. Helen says, it acts like a duck, acts like a duck. So that, that's really what you're approving is the, the contract. Is that right, Mr. Valley?
Right.
All right, so, that's the item on the floor. Any questions about it, comments? Okay, is there a motion to adopt? Or I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve the contract? Is that, that's one stated, right, Mr. Valley? With the ion wave? Yeah, did we raise a quorum?
You, you.
Yeah, we still have a quorum?
Yes, you still have a quorum.
Um, so is there a motion on the floor to approve contracts on wave regarding bidding software? Okay, no motion, uh, moving forward. So the resolutions that came before that were multiple resolutions, they're not absolutely required, I don't think, in some cases, but, um, feel free to comment on them. One, uh, Mr. Valley, I'll leave this up to you. Uh, July, I mean, as far as what we need to do on it, um, I've been told two or three different things, but, uh, just like we did for end, for, uh, Jan, for New Year's Day, New Year's weekend, I wanted to designate, like the city has done in the past, the Helena River Park has a designated fireworks area with the fire department, uh, in the lead, and also the police department supporting, um, that area for public safety purposes, but it would allow citizens to go down there to, you know, participate in fire, you know, to, to play, to use their fireworks. Last year, um, you know, we, we definitely did our best to enforce the ordinance against fireworks in the city limits. Reason that exists, it's a fire hazard. It causes a lot of disturbances for older people particularly, um, but, but a lot of people, and not to mention pets and animals, um, but mainly it's a fire, fire hazard. So in the past, I understand it's been designated at the river park, um, and that was the solution that was recommended, because then the police can give a warning and say, but you can go down to the river park, gives them a place to safely do it. Anyway, the resolution was to support that.
Yes, you, you, you're historically correct.
So I guess, Mr. Valley, really my question is, I mean, I prefer a resolution regardless, but, um.
I think last time the city council voted to, to authorize you to do it, uh.
Yeah, they did. January first, but what happened is it rained anyway, nobody went down there. So this will be the first time we've done it since I've been mayor anyway, that, well, we did it, like I said, but nobody went because of the rain. Uh, it, last year, July the fourth, as you all know, is a much bigger issue when it comes to fireworks. We were going to try to, um, test it, I guess, but, uh, but I think it's a good idea, it wasn't my idea, I think it's a good idea. Do I need a resolution order for the city to do it?
Yep, uh, you, uh, yes, sir, to do it. Their vote, both votes the same as a resolution, but yes, to, to do it, uh, you need some authority because your ordinance specifically prohibits and they have suspended, they're technically suspending an ordinance for, to authorize.
So I'll open that up. I know everybody's getting tired. Any questions or comments about that resolution for July the fourth? Anybody want to make a motion to adopt the resolution for July the fourth?
Some move to adopt resolution number, it looks like, but, uh, is it a nine, zero, nine, twenty, twenty-one?
Ms. Ford moves adoption resolution nine, twenty, twenty-one on fireworks in the city limits. Uh, Ms. Davis takes the motion. Any other questions or, or comments? If not, call the roll.
Davis?
Yes.
Thank Columbia. Franklin? Etherly?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Thank Columbia. Franklin? Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, well, we're, I know we're all getting tired, it's eight-thirty. I'll, I'll, we have items on the agenda, so I'm just going to open it up and see what y'all want to do.
Not to try y'all, but, uh, the president did, did, uh, I don't know if he signed the bill or not, but I know both houses approved. Our, our, uh, policy procedure manual does not include Juneteenth as a holiday. Uh, I think that, uh, the mayor's doing an executive order out of bounds of caution, I think that, that if, if, if you all agree with it, uh, that you should go ahead and, and, uh, approve that as a holiday and, and our pro- policy manual should be treated like any other holiday. Uh, but that's just, uh, food for, that's, it's not necessary tonight, but, uh, it would have to be done by ordinance, but, uh, I was just trying to put that out there so you can kind of think about that as well.
It can't hurt. If somebody wants to make a motion and second it, we can bet on it.
So what are you asking for a motion to, uh, give the city attorney, uh, ask, or to ask city attorney to prepare an ordinance or to vote tonight without an ordinance?
Well, that, 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 let me, let me make a point. What I'm actually do, that what I'm asking the city council to do, if, if you so choose, to adopt Juneteenth as a city holiday and be treated as every other holiday in our personnel, in our per- pilot, the personnel handbook. And then I'll bring an ordinance back for adoption next month, but, uh, ne- what the next city council means, but the, the holiday occurs this, this Friday. That's why I wanted to make sure their spending was appropriated before the holiday occurred. Holiday occurred tomorrow.
So moved.
Ms. Ford moves adoption, uh, uh, resolution, right?
Yes.
Could make Juneteenth, uh, a recognized holiday in our employee manual. Is there a second?
Yes, Ms. Davis seconded already.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Ms. Davis taking the motion, any other questions, comments? If not, call the roll.
Thank Columbia. Forward?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Franklin? Smith?
Yes.
Thank you all, that, therefore, it should be treated, the mayor should treat it like every other holiday, and his, his, uh, proclamation would be in accordance with every other holiday. Thank you.
I guess I'll just quickly address the other two resolutions. Again, it's getting late, so we're, we'll, I'm going to, I'm open for suggestions, but uh, one, eh, we don't have to do tonight, but it's, um, USDA rural development grant loan program. I kind of alluded to this earlier, that we're putting together for needed equipment, um, for the city, and, um, it's, it's just a resolution, resolution seven. It's something that's included in the grant loan, uh, application process, so the other one is to ask the Helena West Town Planning Commission to resume their meetings, um, and request, uh, consider requests regarding, uh, signings, I think it was supposed to be, and street designations related to the Conway twenty proposal and other matters. Um, again, we don't actually have to do that tonight. Uh, it's resolution number eight. And then we have a lot of discussion items, so what would y'all like to be going forward?
Uh, let's go ahead and take care of this seven and eight, isn't it, uh?
Yes, ma'am.
USDA grant in the, uh, eight is for the planning commission. I move that we adopt these two resolutions, seven and eight, tonight.
Ms. Ms. Ford moves the option of resolutions number seven regarding USDA rural development grant loan application.
Uh, may I ask you seven and eight?
And, uh, well, I was getting there, and resolution eight regarding the Helena West Town Planning Commission. Um, I mean, is there a second?
Monica.
Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis seconded. Uh, any other questions or, or comments? If not, call the roll.
Thank Columbia. Franklin? Davis?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Four yes.
Okay, thank you, uh, very much, and that is helpful, particularly on the, uh, the grant loan application. Okay, so again, I'm, I'm going to open up on the rest of the agenda discussion items. Uh, again, we'll move forward, uh, as you wish. So, I'm just, I'm just bringing that up because it's getting late, I know it's a long agenda. Or you can just pick and choose, I mean, it's, I'll just open it for discussion, how about that? And now whoever wants to discuss something can.
Man, we're going to split up this morning, okay, get, uh, your lunch.
I got one question before we end.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Uh, can we table that, y'all, about this, this pay raise for the CDL driver to the next council meeting? Mr. Don, y'all, rest of y'all, mayor?
Uh, things are already tabled, Mr. Jones, I don't think they voted on it.
How about we just move it, uh, put it on the agenda for the next meeting? Same thing.
And, and mayor, I, I would ask, uh, uh, could we have something for the wage increase that we have, uh, a concise request, uh, that would include step, um,
Okay.
increases based on experience and licensure?
Yes, ma'am.
That, that, that's all fine, and is, is there anything that we have that we need, absolutely need to address this evening? We can table the rest of the agenda until the next meeting, as far as I'm concerned.
I'm just, that's the discussion, so, anybody, anybody wants? Anybody object to that? Okay, um, if there's no objection, Mr. Ethely will, will go ahead and make the rest of these items to the next, uh, agenda for the next meeting. And is there an objection? If not, we'll leave that. Okay, well, it has been a long meeting, uh, thank you, uh, for all of you in the next. Uh, well, I'm sorry. Do you still have a quorum? I know we need to adopt some minutes. Do we want to move that too?
Yeah, this, this, move it.
Okay. All right, well, there's no objection, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Thank y'all very much, no objection. Bye, guys.